To put yourselves out there because of this process. I've been in your shoes. I was appointed a long, long time ago. And I just know how, how kind of, you know, how that is to put yourself out there and be willing to step up. And so I appreciate that. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda of the May 20th, 2024 special meeting as presented? Moved by Mr. Osowski. Is there support? Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes. Opposed? Motion carries. There's five of us, right? Yeah, five. One, two, three, four, five. All right. Call to the audience, public participation regarding agenda items. Mr. Kick is going to look for me, but I'm sure that y'all don't want to talk to us about the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Kick. All right. Communications received by the Board Secretary. Ms. Dean is not here. She is our Board Secretary. I will circle back to that just in case there is something when she gets here. Interview applicants for the board vacancy. I'm just going to go by the order. Y'all are on my list. And I'll just say, I'm going to have you step up. Tell us a little bit about yourself. We will then each ask two questions. And then if we need a follow-up to those two questions, we will allow, thank you, because it's getting that little echo. Thank you. If we need a follow-up, we'll, I'll allow a follow-up. And then I'll give you just a couple of minutes to do a closing statement. I asked the board to remember that a follow-up is clarification to one of the two questions, not a third question. And so Melanie Hamilton, you're up first. Yes. Yep, sit down. Push the little face on the microphone thing there. There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me? My name's Melanie Hamilton. I have been in this district for 50-plus years. My parents were in the district. My grandparents were in the district. So I just thought I would give it a try. My kids are grown. Grandkids are grown. It's time for me to step up and try to help out.
All right. Thank you. So I'll just go down. I'll go in order. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you very much for coming forward and applying.
Mr. Bailey, could you turn me the mic?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So how much face time in your position do you have with the administration of Redford Union?
I see them quite a bit. Quite a bit. I talk to Miles. I talk to Mike. I talk to them all. Probably every day. One of them. Do what?
Yeah, closer, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Is that better? Sorry. So yeah, I have quite a bit of interaction with them, them all.
Thank you.
Is that the only question you have, Mr. Bailey?
It is.
Okay.
All right. Mrs. Martin.
What do you think is the greatest? Oh, sorry. What do you think is the greatest challenge in our school district regarding special education?
Special education?
Yes.
I think we need to, to make it more in, oh, shoot. Sorry. To get it more back in here for us. So we don't have to transport out. I think our teachers need to be here and teaching our students here.
Second question. What do you think it means for students to be supported in the least restrictive environment?
In the least restrictive environment? Supported?
As relates to special education.
I, you know what? I haven't thought of that, so can I get back to you on that one?
Sure. Thank you. No worries. No wrong answers at all. No wrong answers. You know, well, since that, I will follow back up from Mr. Bailey's question then. Do you think that it would be hard for you to be in the role as a super board, as a school board member in your current position?
No, I don't. I think I would be an asset to this, to the, to the group there.
Thank you.
I bring a different, like, all perspectives because I've been a parent. I've been a grandparent. I've been a driver. I've been a custodian. Everything. I've done it all in the district. So.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, are you ready to ask your questions? Okay, we're going to go down to Mr. Osowski.
Okay.
Okay, let's, well, thank you to start. I've been on that seat a couple of times.
It's not comfortable.
What do you see as a role of a board member?
As a role of a board member? We have to make decisions that are best for the district, I think. You know? Try to do what's best for our students.
How would you, do you think you can maintain or separate being a school board member? Listen to people complain about transportation on that side of the table? Be on this side of the table? And separate personal feelings between them both? Because it tends, a lot of times, we get stuff directed at us from that side, and we don't answer back here. Is that something you could separate?
I definitely can separate that.
Okay.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osowski. Ms. Miller.
I have two questions. Why are you interested in serving on the school board?
Why? Well, it's, it's my turn to step up and help out the district. I think I would do a good job there. I've been, like I said, with the district for so long that now it's, I want to help it move forward. Mike's doing a great job doing all that. And, you know, I just want to be a part of it.
Okay, I have one more. Describe your response if a parent cornered you in a grocery store and asked you for your support on a particular hot issue. How would you respond to that?
How would I respond? I, I would just, that's a good question. I would, yeah. Oh, I'm sure it does. I can imagine it does. I probably would not give them an answer. I would have to look into the situation, see what they were talking about.
All right, my turn. Okay. So I'm probably asked the hardest questions, probably. But I've been there, so. So as a school board member, we are called upon to vote on contracts. And we get highly confidential information regarding those contracts prior to them being discussed in a board meeting. Given the fact that you are employed by a contracted service of this district, how can, how do you, can you, are you prepared to handle, say, if our bus contract were to come up for renewal? Because that directly impacts your personal life.
Right, right. Well, right now, we're only going to November. But I was, I would just take myself out of that situation. I would have to, I would have to step back because that wouldn't be fair.
What do you think the hardest part of being a school board member is?
This interview right here.
Mrs. Martin is not far removed from that. She probably would agree.
Yes, 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 yes.
When I did this, they, we weren't allowed in the room when, we had to wait. So we didn't know what other people were answering. So you're like sitting down there in the, you know, down in another room waiting for your turn. It was like nerve-wracking, right?
I know. I've been thinking about this all day long.
I understand. I have to do an interview with Michigan Association of School Boards to fill a role in their vacant, on their Board of Directors on Wednesday. And I probably won't sleep between now and Wednesday.
You'll do great.
Thank you.
But yeah, that's probably it. Probably this interview.
It's, yeah.
There's going to be tough decisions, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
But I have no doubt that I can make the right decisions.
Okay. All right, is everything good? Does anybody have a follow-up question? See, it was, oh, Mr. Bailey.
If you don't make this position at this point in time, would you still be interested in working with the school district?
You know, I'll say, I'm going to break my own rule and ask a third question. I know, right? Such a troublemaker. Given that this seat is only until January, are you prepared to run for the seat?
Absolutely.
And you're aware that it's a six-year, oh, wait. Yeah, it would be a six-year term because the term expires.
Okay, I thought it was four, but yeah.
Yeah, I think it's six. Is it?
Absolutely.
It might be four. It might be a partial four, but.
I'm not going to where I've been here.
Yeah, it would be the remainder of this term.
Okay. Well, then I think that's January because my seat is up and then there would be one other. So it would, that term, I think.
No, but if whoever is the successful candidate appointed this, it would be the remainder of the term.
Don't pay any attention to me. I clearly don't know.
Which is, yeah, which is.
Right. So you would have to run in November for however long Mrs. Moore's term was.
I've been here 58 years. I'm not going to.
Don't pay any attention to me. All right. So I'll give you just a couple of minutes to, to make a closing statement.
Well, I think it would be wonderful to have the opportunity to work with everybody on the board. I think it would, you know, benefit you, benefit me, help me learn more about the district, although I do know it quite a bit. I've been here quite a bit, so yeah, that's about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You are off the hot seat.
Thank you.
Next up to the hot seat. Come on down, John McAfee. All right, same rules. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. We have lived in the district. We were here for 18 years. We moved away for a little bit, and now we've moved back. I raised my four biological children. All went through the entirety of the district and all graduated. And we adopted a young man at 15. And he was an athlete and student of the district also. I just want to thank you all for, for this opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Same rule. Mr. Bailey.
So Frank, I thank you very much for coming forward and putting yourself up to this position.
Thank you.
I also have read your resume, and I thank you very much for the service that you provided in the past. You, on your resume here, it says you're part of Blue and Gold.
That's correct. Yeah, we were, my wife and I were both very instrumental in Blue and Gold through the academic life of all four of our children. We were trustees there. We worked concessions, whatever needed doing.
What happened to the organization?
I'm sorry?
What happened?
What happened to the organization?
What happened to the organization?
It doesn't exist now, does it?
I wouldn't know that, actually. We, we moved away for about four years and recently are back into the district and getting into the swing of things.
So for the record, Blue and Gold does still exist. But I'll tell you that it's not the Blue and Gold that it used to be because parents don't want to be involved. But Mr. Osowski is part of Blue and Gold still to this day, so. All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Martin.
Describe how you advocate openness and democratic process in all board activities with emphasis on team decision-making and consensus.
Wow. Yeah, I definitely, yeah, that's, that's a great one. I definitely agree in the democratic process. And just, it's the only way that everybody gets their voice and can be an input into the, into the discussion and hopefully help form solutions.
And what do you think is the greatest challenge in our school district regarding special education?
Wow. Special education, sorry. Yeah, yeah. I think we need to be very forward in providing the services that, that need to be provided for special education. And they're a very, we would serve a very important role into making sure to provide everything that needed, was, was needed for their education.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm nervous.
No, it's okay. No, trust me. I sat in the seat September of this upcoming school year, so I definitely understand the nervousness. Thank you.
Thank you.
I promise we're all friendly.
Absolutely.
I don't know. How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being carried out? How would we know?
How would we know that? I think we would, we would have a good indication on the goals and if they were being met by the success of the students. Our graduation rates are how everybody is received and that we're able to keep a balanced budget and, you know, oversee the spending and, yeah.
What would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change?
I think the district is actually on a great path right now. I had the opportunity after the last board meeting to kind of tour the school and see everything that's going on there. And I think it's just fantastic. We are, you all are bringing Redford Union up to another level that is just so impressive to see. I'm, I'm really, really pleased with, with everything that's gone on. And, and definitely look forward to being a part of going, that going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Osowski.
Turn it up. What do you see as a role of the school board member? I'm sorry? What do you see as a school board member? What do you see as? What do I see as a role? I see that as a, an opportunity to enact some positive change, to, you know, initiate positive changes and being advocates for the students, the parents, and the teachers to move things forward in a, in a positive way. Second question. Thank you. What do you think is the most important thing as a school board member that we do? I think probably, not, not knowing, coming from this side of the table, but.
Your interpretation?
My interpretation would be upholding the policies of the, of the district and the, and the schools and the teachers, keeping, keeping an eye on the budgets and the spending and so we're not, you know, digging ourselves into too big of a hole or something. Just, you know, keep everybody above board. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to, again, I'll ask three questions. Are you prepared to run in November?
I am. I, I look at this as a, as a great opportunity to be able to give back.
What do you think the biggest challenges facing pub, what are the, what do you think are the biggest challenges facing public education today?
Challenges facing public education? I think trying to keep the students involved and, yeah, keeping them involved and interested because they are our future. You know, nothing's going to, going to go forward without, without our support to them and them moving on. I think the students and, and getting, hopefully, trying to get parents more involved. I know that's been an age-old issue.
Okay. And then as a board member, you will be asked to make decisions where you have to decide what's best for you and your family and your friends and your school and do what's best for the students in the district. What does that mean to you?
That means keeping a really open mind to looking to the future and, and what is best for the students. Realistically, it comes right down to that. What's best for the students? And, yeah.
Thank you. Does anybody have a follow-up? Mr. Bailey.
You had mentioned about change and being an advocate. How would you know, go about knowing what changes need to be made and what things you need to advocate for?
Right. I think it's probably all about keeping an open ear to the day-to-day operations and, and just knowing what's going on in the school, getting the feedback from, from the parents, from the, from the teachers. Because we don't, you know, as board members, have, have eyes and ears necessarily in the buildings. And I think we, we just have to be open to hearing what's going on.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Turn to chair.
Yep. Mrs. Martin.
It's kind of a third question, but I want to ask. Do you have time to sit on the board? Will you be present at the meetings?
I do. All my kids are gone and grown. I have grandkids in the area. But I work a seven to 3:30 job. And I have plenty of time to give back to the district. Absolutely. And I would really enjoy it.
Thank you.
And you know what? I'll, I'll go ahead and say, Mrs. Hamilton? Do you have the time to commit? Because it's a minimum of two board meetings a month and sometimes more. And then we try to be out in the community at our events and things like that. Okay.
Absolutely.
It's a fair question.
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey.
One last question. So if you don't happen to make it tonight, and again, there'd be abundant probably opportunities in the future.
Right.
Would you still be interested in participating with the school district?
Oh, absolutely. We moved back to the district last August and have been looking for a way to be able to give back and get back involved. Redford's a great township. I love the community. We, we didn't think of anywhere else to move back to but Redford. And the district, you know, supported our kids and gave them great educations. They're all upstanding members of the community, doing better than I'm doing now. So, you know, I got to give a lot of credit to the, to the district for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Closing comments?
I just would feel honored to be part of the board and be able to give back and help provide the quality education to the students and support the teachers and the staff. Yeah, that's about it. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now it's the hard part. So let's keep in mind that we cannot have discussion without a nomination. And I'm just, I'm going to stop for a second before we go any further. And I'm going to ask our most current board member, who just went through this process. Because I felt like the deliberation that happened in September was very uncomfortable for the two candidates in the room. And not that we're trying to not, we are upholding Open Meetings Act, but I want you to be comfortable with any deliberation that might happen. And so I'm wondering how the board feels about, and how you guys feel about deliberation in front of you? And because wouldn't you agree that it was a little uncomfortable?
It was uncomfortable, but it was good interaction. So because we were able to actually still, we were able to actually participate during some of the deliberation. So like, so I think that was good.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll proceed as, I just don't, I don't want anybody to be uncomfortable.
How do you guys feel?
Okay, you guys are good? Okay. We're not, I mean, I was probably the hardest on her. I'm sorry.
She was hard.
I was hard on her. I was really hard on her. Okay. So we will move on to action items, special consideration, non-consent agenda action items. Can I get a motion for a new? I need someone to make a motion. Who they are feeling. Are we feeling ready for that or, because we can't deliberate? Bless you.
Make a motion for John.
There's an open seat down here.
All right. I'm hearing Mrs. Martin.
Make a motion for John McAfee?
For John, okay.
A second.
With a seconded by Mr. Osowski. Okay, so currently, the motion is that the Board of Education appoint John McAfee as a new trustee of the Redford Union School Board of Education effective 5/2024. Trustee McAfee will fill the position until November 2024 elections are certified, after which a newly elected member will complete the term. Is there any discussion? All right.
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey.
So I am going to support that motion for the simple reason that, Ms. Hamilton, I appreciate your involvement. And I, I encourage you to. But the fact that you're in management, I think there needs to be a separation between management and the governing board of the school district. Other than that, you're wonderful. And again, thank you very much for coming forward.
Okay. Before we go to the roll call, I'll also say to both of you, thank you. And please, there's lots of ways that we can put you to work, both y'all. There's, so please continue to be involved and, you know, consider running in elections because at some point, we're going to not always want to sit here, right? You know, we're not, we're not going to stay forever. And there still need to be people who care about the district. So I will move on to the roll call. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Miller. Mr. Osowski. Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. So we will, now we need to move him up here because he's now, because we have, because we have some business to do. And then I believe that we will swear you in. Actually, let's take, let's take five minutes and swear you in. Do we have somebody? Can you swear him in? No, oh, never mind. I lied. All right. You're sworn in unofficially. Okay. Because we need to appoint a treasurer. You know what? We'll just go with what we have here. Never mind. Okay. Item number two, nomination of treasurer. Okay. The member elected, oh, no. No, 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 no. Okay. It says, oh, I'm sorry. Give me a second. The member elected today will hold this officer position until July 8, 2024, which is our organizational meeting. During that meeting, elections will take place for all four officer roles. So I need a nomination to fill the vacancy of treasurer. So Ms. Miller nominates Mrs. Martin.
To the chair, point of information.
Mr. Bailey.
So we not, we, we just appointed somebody to fill a vacancy.
Correct.
But we do not have him sworn in.
Right, that's why I had him stay out there.
Well, whether he stays out there or not, you're trying to select somebody to fill an officer's position that is not a board member.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna ask him to vote.
The member that's.
I'm gonna use.
When it says the member elected today, Mr. Bailey, maybe it's a, it could be read different ways. It means the member who's elected today through this nomination process.
So not Mr. McAfee.
And Ms. Martin is the one who was just nominated.
Okay, I I I get it, because when I first read it, I had to take a second.
So the member elected through item number A two on your agenda will be the one. And at this point in time, a nomination was made.
To Ms., for Mrs. Martin to be treasurer, and I need support for that.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Martin, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay, are there any further nominations for the position of treasurer? All right, hearing none, I need a motion to close the nominations.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, seconded by.
Support.
Mr. Osowski, thank you. All in favor to close the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, roll call vote relative to Mrs. Martin for the position of treasurer. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Oh, that's a little old. Ms. Gray is not on that. Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Osowski. Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. It was like, uh. All right, motion, did I call everybody? I think so. Yes. Okay, the the agenda reads a little different, so. That motion carries. All right, call to the audience, public participation regarding non-agenda items. Thank you, Mr. Kick. All right, Harry Kick.
It's first time for me being here in the new days.
I know, right? So, Mr. Kick, I will remind you that the board does not typically respond, and we don't go into a back and forth. And to please treat each board member with dignity.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm here today to discuss something that happened, take my hat off, to something that was published on May sixteen. I have the article right here. This is an article that appeared in the WDIV local news, and it concerns Redford Union. It's here, I I ran out of ink, so I couldn't print one out for everybody, and I apologize. But I do have it here if you wish to look at it. I'm only concerned, okay. I'm sorry, I don't have more. I'm really only concerned with the comments made by trustee Bailey. And his comments were made to Jacqueline Francis of WDIV, who also authored and published this article. And she afforded trustee Bailey an opportunity to speak, so he took that opportunity to make an official statement. So trustee Bailey, and these, this is a quote, I'm quoting this right from that package. "Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have too many ambush, uh, there's been too many ambush tactics used to date. What is being done now against me and Redford Union School District was attempted against another board member, Mr. Peltow, in nineteen ninety-nine. So, Mr. Bailey, so it has been expected. In answer to your question, if I were to resign, who would continue to stand up for our children and their futures? Please, see the statistics over the years. If I were to resign, who would stand up against the illegal activities being done around me? See the meeting being complained about? If I were to resign, who would advocate for better preparation for half of our population?" This was his statement. Here's mine. "I've been a Redford, I've been a member of the Redford Union School District one since the second, or since February first nineteen eighty-one. My children, my grandchildren have received their public education here in Redford Union. I'm proud to have been associated in varying degrees with the district that entire time. And you can even go back further, because my dad taught driver's ed here in the late sixties when we had driver's ed." "I've had both the honor and the privilege to serve as chair, co-chair on various district-wide committees, as well as to serve as an RU board member. When I read this statement by trustee Bailey, I was left with only one thought. Every word of it's a lie. Trustee Bailey's official statement only represents his own narcissistic viewpoint. Only I can fix it. If trustee Bailey were to resign, and I'm paraphrasing this because he said aye, so I'm just including trustee Bailey. If I were to, trustee Bailey were to resign, who would stand up for the children and their futures? If I, trustee Bailey, were to resign, who would advocate for a better preparation of half the population? It would seem, trusty Bailey, in trustee Bailey's eyes, none of you. The biggest lie, though, if trust, if I, trustee Bailey, were to resign, who would stand up against the illegal activities being done all around me? This is the most serious accusation trustee Bailey has ever made. I am requesting a full accounting of all the illegal activities this board has been doing. And so I'm clear, illegal activities is not violations of Robert's Rules of Order. It's violation of the Constitution of the United States and the state of Michigan. And all of you apparently have been doing something like that. Trustee Bailey, I'm sure you're deep, deep into the Michigan Attorney General's investigation on this, and I'm sure a grand jury will be convened soon. But even Mr. Peltow discovered that being an incompetent board member draws the wrath of voters through recalls. I'm sitting as a sitting member of the Redford Union Board of Education. Why is it that for trustee Bailey, nobody wants to work with him? Why is it trustee Bailey, nobody wants to be, nobody wants him in their building? Why is it that the staff and our student body don't even wanna be around him? And from my experience, most of the people in this room would not even wanna be in the same room with him. But the board is the board. The Redford Union Board of Education bylaws, Code of Ethics, number four, states the following. "I will take no private action that might compromise the board or the administration, and will respect the confidentiality of privileged information." Mr. Bailey unquestionably has compromised this board in every sense of the word, and he continues to. He's been censured three times for violation of the bylaws. And he should have been censured last meeting, and he should be censured this meeting because he's got a camera sitting on the table, and he's got a camera sitting over there. And this board has told him not to do that. He openly flouts his supposed narcissism on all of you, and you all let him. It's time for you to resign, Mr. Bailey. Whomever takes your seat will do a much better, a more inspired job fulfilling those questions above, as well as guiding this district to a brighter and better future. It's time for you to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kick. I have no other call to the, I have no other people intending to call, to speak to the board. So we will move on to Board of Education Communication and Discussion. I will go first and say that for the board members in this room, if you don't already know, I did give an interview to WDIV, which you can see on their website, which Mr. Bailey chose to respond to. Not on camera, by the way, he chose to issue a statement accusing this board of illegal activities. And I will be addressing those accusations at the June board meeting with president's remarks. And, Mr. Bailey, and the board, you can expect another censure to come your way, which will make four if it passes. And if you are truly recording from down there, I will go back into our minutes where we specifically addressed recording from this board table. And I will censure regarding that, because I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that the more I pile it on, the more attention it will draw, and the more likely we are to get support from the state level in Lansing. Having said that, I hope to see you all Wednesday at graduation. Jackie, I'm sure we'll be sending out information about when we need to be there, where it's at, all the good stuff.
A week, a week from this Wednesday.
I'm sorry, a week from Wednesday.
I don't want anybody to show up that early.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that would be really early. Evelyn said, don't pay attention, Evelyn, next Wednesday, the twenty ninth. Yes.
We knew what you were saying.
Yes. Also, like I said earlier, I will be, I personally will be interviewing with the MASB Board of Directors this Wednesday via Zoom. I have to face eight of my peers. And I will keep you updated. I know that their intent is to fill that seat pretty quickly because they want that board member seated and able to travel to Lansing for the board meeting in July. So I will keep you all updated. Is there any, before I go on, before I ask for further Board of Education Communication and Discussion, we will not get into a back and forth regarding board comments, regarding public comments. So if you're about to do that, just hold your tongue, that's not the place for that. And I will remind everyone that if you are wanting to visit our buildings or be part of viewing programs that are taking place in this district or with conjunction with other districts, the proper channel is through Mr. Witt. Or at least give him the courtesy of copying him on an email you send to a board, to a building administrator.
Yes, that was my thought.
Thank you. It's okay, just, you know, we wanna make sure we're respecting the chain of command. All right, is there further Board of Communication?
To the chair.
Mr. Osowski.
I would like to give a shout out to the girls' flag football team for winning their championship.
Yay!
As Mr. Witt talked to Mr. Eiler, it only took him one season to get the championship.
Right, right, do you think maybe we could get them into the June meeting?
He's heard, he's heard.
We could talk a little smack, do you think maybe we could honor them in the June meeting or July? I know June is busy because we honor retirees and all that stuff too, but, you know, it'd be nice to get them in before the summer and give them a kudos.
It was a great night. It was beautiful out, and like I said, it was pretty good, a packed house, and all four teams played really, really well.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Mrs. Martin.
You know, I think what happened with that email that I sent, Principal Taylor, it was, I was hearing like, oh, if you wanna hear, if you wanna visit, just contact the principal, I was hearing that. So I'm thinking, you know what I'm saying, that was, then I'm looking like, man, I probably should have copied the superintendent too. And then, so I was like, did not, when I was like, I was looking at my phone, I was like, it's too late to text him, so I'm gonna wait till today to talk to the superintendent about it. But yeah, it was definitely no ill will towards Principal Taylor, wasn't trying to, I'm thinking, I was doing, I'm sorry.
I get it, I appreciate it, I appreciate you clarifying that. They usually, I'll say, even, I mean, I confess that there have been times that I have dealt with staff that I didn't tell Mr. Witt about, and he always finds out, I'm just saying. I'm just saying. Mr. Bailey.
So a week from now is going to be graduation, and I believe I heard on the news that Sheldon exit off M fourteen is gonna be closed.
Okay.
So.
So we may have to go down five mile.
You need to go through the back roads, I believe, and it's gonna be a cluster all the way, so.
I'll send, I'll send Mr. Wood a map.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I know, I remember a few years ago when Ninety-six was under construction, we had to go the long way. And if you have to go the long way, plan on traffic being crazy and, because I remember that nightmare when, that was like. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
To the chair.
Yes.
So blue and gold exists, so you say, is there any chance we could have a presentation on the good deeds they do and what's up?
We can reach out to them and ask them to do that, the few that are active, I'm, yeah, sure.
Please.
Graduation is at seven o'clock. Wait, seven AM? I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you said seven AM, I was like, oh.
No, no, seven PM, so graduation is at seven PM. We usually need to be there about six, because we gotta get roped up, make a walk down, wear comfortable shoes, because it is a good little hike down to the stage from where we convene, hang out as a board. Yeah, and just be, and then be prepared to like pack your patience on getting out of there, because the traffic is. So that's, all right, so graduation, May twenty ninth, seven PM. All right, is there any further discussion, communication? All right, moving on, future meeting dates scheduled at this time. Monday, June tenth, regular meeting, five thirty, that location is to be determined. It is very likely going to be across the street, depending on the number of attendees we have in the Performing Arts Center. Monday, June seventeenth, regular board meeting, final budget resolution and other pertinent items, five thirty PM, right here in the district meeting room at McGowan School. And then immediately following that regular meeting, Monday, June seventeenth, a board workshop, again, right here in the district meeting room at McGowan School.
Just real quickly, there's a strong likelihood based on, we had interest-based bargaining today with one of our units. It was a very successful day along with Friday. And so there likely will be at least one tentative agreement that's included on the board meeting agenda for that June seventeenth meeting for the board to consider. So I just wanted to mention that thanks to the efforts of Mrs. Knackman and Mrs. Crenshaw and the IBB process, it worked well the last couple of days. And within actually just, I think it's like less than about six hours, we actually worked through a large number of issues and reached agreement in that interest-based bargaining process, so.
Ooh, I love those words, harmonious, that's always good. And you know what, before we go, there is one thing too. In my research for my MASB interview and kind of going back a couple of weeks ago, I heard a news story that Dr. Vidi, who is the superintendent at Detroit, in Detroit, is pushing Lansing to bring some regulation regarding tobacco products and vaping and some safeties. And so there is a sample resolution that MASB has drafted because they stand behind that, that I will most likely be bringing in June for us to support the work that needs to happen in Lansing to protect our children from, from vaping, from advertisements and that, things that make it look cool. MASB is behind that. I think as school districts, it's important that we we stand united in something like that. So I will bring, I'll probably just take exactly what MASB has, because they write them way better than I do. And it's a lot of work to write a resolution. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Osowski, seconded by Mrs. Martin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries.